All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of September 23rd, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I'm moved to excuse the absences of Councilperson Moulton and Young from tonight's meeting.
A motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubig, to excuse Councilmembers Young and Moulton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, first up, announcements and current committee reports. I've got a couple of announcements. Just a reminder, there will be no council meeting next Monday, September 30th. That's the fifth Monday, so we -- council meets all four Mondays, except for the fifth Monday. Also, residential cleanup day. I'd like to thank staff, specifically Fleet Fiber, Park, Streets, Solid Waste, for supporting, once again, a very popular event on Saturday morning. Brought in 312 customers, 11 appliances were dropped off, 40 yards of yard waste, 24.14 tons of garbage, and a 30-yard box of scrap metal that'll be taken to Skagit Steel Recycling. So, again, another good event, and I hope you were able to participate. Oyster Run, also a big thank you to APD. It's always a major lift, but also Seattle PD, State Patrol, that came up to help. Again, police presence there and the preparation ensured yet another safe and enjoyable event for those who participated. Also, thanks Chief Harris and team, specifically -- a lot of departments participated. We had a drill on Thursday, an exercise where we weren't really doing a specific drill, but we were exercising some difficult elements of a drill, and specifically Ms. Grange running the planning, and Mr. Ludeman, and Ms. Johnson also. We moved 25 people out of Chandler Square. Not all of them were completely mobile, but thanks to Skagit Transit for providing some buses that we were able to do this. We also fed them, set up a shelter, and we set up a water distribution point in Washington Park. So, lots of lessons learned with doing some challenging stuff, but actually able to accomplish a lot of the things that we were hoping to do there. A reminder, ATOWN Magazine expected to hit your mailboxes this week. And then finally, if you could participate in a community survey, we'd appreciate that on the transportation plan. So, it's on our link. Go to our website, and you'll have a survey QR code, and you can go participate. It'll be open until September 30th. This will help our contractor help build our transportation plan for the next 20 years. So, and that is it for me. For the committees, first up, I've got Planning Committee.
Yeah.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. We had our Planning Committee at 5:00 today, and let me just pull up my notes. We kind of were just tying up some loose ends. We've received some concerns about -- from the public regarding the fact that we are not doing conditional -- what is it? Sorry. PUDs, Planned Unit Developments. And that's been not on the books for a number of years. It was done prior to 2019 when we did the code update. And we've been receiving some concerns that how are we preserving the benefits we saw with some of those Planned Unit Developments, such as either access through paths along the waterfront, or roundabouts or whatnot. And we are formal -- or kind of formalizing a response to that, so that we can explain that in the old days, we didn't have a lot of rules. So, when we would do Planned Unit Developments, it required going through the review -- reviewing every detail, and kind of reinventing the wheel and not having design standards. So, and it made some of those conditions that were put on the development may or may not always be legal. So, what is best practice is now, coming out from Commerce, and also what we're seeing from North Star Initiative, for the county is that housing by right, where we have formalized design standards that can be reviewed on a regular basis, that the public can see, and that we hold all applicants to, is a better use of time for both staff. It is fairer and better for the applicant, because it's a little bit more consistent. So, we're just going to talk -- we talked a little bit about that, and making sure that we are addressing the concerns of some of the strengths we saw when we would see those Planning Unit Developments, and making sure that, moving forward, we are able to have those benefits for the public in the future. We also talked a little bit about some ordinance cleanup, and then also working on some permit review timelines that should come to council sooner than later, but is still in the infancy. That is it.
Any questions for Planning Committee? Okay, next up is Economic Development Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. We met last Tuesday, the 17th. It was myself, Mr. McDougall, Mr. Young, Mr. Coleman, and some of the research staff from Western Washington University. Western is helping us put this survey together, so we fine-tuned a couple of questions on it. We do expect to get a link from Western, so that we can go through and test it out ourselves before we send it out to the general public, make sure that the if-then statements that we've put in actually work, because we do want to separate people that live and work from people that may live or may only work in town, so that we've got a pretty robust data set. And then we did also spend a little bit of time going over the in-person discussions that we will be having later. Dates to be determined after we get the survey out. So, James over there has warm-up questions to kind of get people focused on the topic of the discussion that we're having, and then we'll go over how the community is perceived, ideas that people have around challenges and barriers, and then visions that people actually have for the future, focused on some very specific topics. So, made a lot of progress, and hopefully soon, we will hear from Western and be able to share the link out to the rest of the community.
Any questions? All right, I believe there was an LTAC meeting. Mr. Walters?
Thank you. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting today was our second meeting to review the applications for 2025 Lodging Tax Fund Awards. We had an objective of adding to our reserves in anticipation of funding an event center. If we do proceed with the event center in 2025, there will be some design expenses in 2025, but major expenses for the building won't kick in until 2026. Still, we want to add to our reserves, and remember, we have that 25% policy of setting aside money for a capital expense. So, on $600,000 of forecasted revenue and $535,000 in requests, that'd be $450,000 of spend after accounting for our 25% capital reserve policy. We have recommendations of about $300,000 for council. We did get some late-breaking information, though, today from the chamber about their requests for funding for tents for their wine and beer events. We didn't have an application from them for that or time to review it, so I think we'd like to figure out all of that in the context of all the requests, but otherwise, we've got recommendations on the others. We do anticipate that we'll get to claw back some of the lodging tax that we allocated for the Cap Santa overlook, which is on the agenda tonight, and it came in at a much lower price than we anticipated. That was $75,000, and Mr. Lunsford is going to check with Rotary to make sure that that's the case, but hopefully it is. All of that being said, things are looking fairly good for lodging tax awards, especially in the context of the event center, and we'll have more information on that as we get more information developed about the event center itself. Sending aside the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting, I also wanted to mention, again, that I am teaching a class at the Senior College on GMA and comprehensive planning, especially useful for anybody who will want to participate in our comprehensive planning process over the next year, 15 months or so. That class is November 5th, 12th, and 19th, all three Tuesdays from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's a total of a six-hour class, and you can register now at seniorcollege.org. Thanks.
Any questions? Okay, any other announcements or committee reports that I missed?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to let everyone know that on this Thursday, September 26th, at the library, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in their community room, I'll be doing a town hall. For anybody that wants to come, talk about things that are happening on the council. Have any questions, suggestions, concerns, complaints, bring them forward, and that'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Thursday at the library.
Okay, any others? Okay, we are moving on to Item 4, which is Public Comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public which to address the council anything that is not on our agenda tonight. And I have signed up Anastasia Bretnik, and if you come on up, and the topic is National Day of Remembrance for Boarding Schools. And if you could, again, say your name and city you live in, please, for the record.
Hi. My name's Anastasia, and I live in Anacortes. In the September 18th issue of the Anacortes American, Chairman of the Samish Nation, Tom Wooten, shares the importance of September 30th, the National Day of Remembrance for U.S. Boarding Schools, also known as Orange Shirt Day. In his article, Chairman Wooten explains that while the history of boarding schools is a painful one, he tells us, quote, "It is not a value of ours to live in what could have or should have been. We must move forward. And to this end, commemorating the National Day of Remembrance plays a crucial role in fostering collective healing and reconciliation," end quote. In 2022, the U.S. Department of the Interior released a 100-page report about the Indian boarding schools in the U.S. that were created to assimilate Native American children into the dominating culture. In a Times article about this report, it stated, quote, "Students endured rampant physical, sexual, and emotional abuse," end quote, "and the report recorded more than 500 deaths of Native children, a number set to increase as the department's investigation of this issue continues." We have Anacortes families who have direct experience of this themselves, or from parents and grandparents who survived these boarding schools, and it is right to hear their stories and grieve the atrocities they have endured and still endure from the results of trauma. If you're like me, I hurt when I think about how anyone could hurt children and their families in this way. These children suffered at the hands of adults who did not see them as the beautiful, precious beings they truly were and are still. While we cannot change this past, we can remember them and their families, knowing how much they were missed and how much they were loved and still are. I'm here to ask that, as a city council, you commemorate this Day of Remembrance for U.S. Boarding Schools for September 30th as a resolution for Anacortes. It is a day to find our way forward through healing by listening, learning, and commit to remembering. The slogan for this day is "Every Child Matters." I think we can all agree to that. And for our larger community, my hope is that we wear orange shirts on that day, bringing awareness to our history, and to let others know that we won't forget. As many of you know, I have two school-aged children who wear orange shirts, or who will wear orange shirts, on September 30th. There are many books to help our children learn about this day and that are age-appropriate. One book, called With Our Orange Hearts, was written by Phyllis Webster, the woman who was the origin of the term Orange Shirt Day. She tells her story about wearing her new orange shirt to the boarding school, and it was taken away from her. She writes at the end of the story, "Today, we wear orange to honor and be together as one human family. Every child matters, including you and me. With our orange hearts, we walk in harmony." Thank you for your consideration in making this resolution, and thank you for those who choose to wear orange shirts next Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have Teresa Baker signed up, but I think you wanted to talk about the Port Security Grant to purchase a boat. Can you wait till that time? Okay, then come on up and address the council.
Teresa Baker.
And it says boat purchase, but this is -- the topic is accepting of a grant.
Right, and I just wanted to -- I know you will probably discuss this in depth. Money is tempting, especially as a grant, but I would like to remind the council that there are many long-term costs associated with a boat. Mortgage, maintenance, insurance, and at the very least, the crew, which I don't know if you have a captain in mind for this, or what you're going to do about a crew. Is this going to be a crew that is full-time, or on-call, or water rescue is a specialty kind of thing, and so I don't know what you have planned for that. But I would just like to point out that these are long-term commitments. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to address the council? Check online. Okay, we'll move on to Item 5, our Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I move approval of Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Ms. Hubig, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to Item 6, which is Other Business. First up is Contract Award, Cap Santa Viewpoint. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Lunsford's already here.
Mayor Miller, counsel, ladies and gentlemen. Glad to be here. So, tonight, we have before us a contract for the Cap Santa Viewpoint. Remember, a couple weeks ago, we were here talking about the MOA with the Rotary Club to help this go forward. That's since been passed and signed. So, Strandberg Construction Incorporated was the low bid at $377,112.77. So, that is below the engineer's estimate, and has been vetted already by our contract staff to bring to you tonight. This project, as you know, has been a collaboration with our partners in the Rotary Club. They've come to the Parks Advisory Commission, they've come to public meetings, they've come to you. And so, I think tonight, President McClintock with the Rotary Club would like to come and say a couple words to you.
All right. Thank you, and welcome again.
Thank you very much. Martin McClintock, I'm the president of the Noon Anacortes Rotary Club, and I have a statement from our club that I'd like to read. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the Anacortes Rotary Club was informed last week that Strandberg Construction will be the contractor on our Cap Santa Viewpoint project. We are very excited about this outcome. Strandberg is a proven contractor with a great track record on city projects, and the amount is within our budget. Regarding the budget, we anticipate our current club funding will mean that we will not need to turn to the lodging tax grant that this council very generously approved last year. We feel especially good about this, as we know that any unused LTAC funds will be good for other community groups. Anacortes Rotary is very excited to get the work underway. After six years of planning and fundraising, we are pleased to help improve Cap Santa with a viewpoint where people can spend time with neighbors, family, and friends. Especially important, as you know, are the ADA accessibility features of the project, which will strengthen and broaden park access for all of our residents and visitors. Our members have a real sense of pride and stewardship in the combined trail and viewpoint project, which celebrates 100 years of Rotary making a difference in our community. Thanks to the great support from the mayor, the city council, and the Parks and Recreation Department, we're looking forward to reinforcing the sense of how people and nature are interconnected in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, it is a contract, so of course, council has an opportunity to ask Mr. Lunsford any questions about the contract. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a quick question. Obviously, there's going to be more trucks up there, things going on. I didn't see in the contract that Strandberg takes care of traffic controls. Is that something that we would be doing, or will there be any?
No, that's a great question. Thank you. So, that's good information for the public. So, we will work with the contractor to set aside a lay-down area up there. I think maybe I touched upon that a couple times ago, but if I didn't, forgive me. Up at the top, we'll probably half the lot a bit, put up signs, letting folks know there'll be trucks coming and going, give them a lay-down area, and maybe even steer parking, if need be, to the lower parking lot. It's just below the summit for a temporary, if that need be. We'll need to meet with the contractor, if you approve the contract, on-site to do some pre-con work. But that would be our emphasis, is to try to make traffic flow safe and usable for the park visitors.
And we're not anticipating any, like, full-time closure, or?
We are not, not at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? I know council's seen this project a few times before, and probably--
I'm going to travel with Ms. McClintock whenever I need to do a presentation. She does a nice job for me.
And always, always happy when the bid comes in below engineers' expectations, so, counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think this is a very nice project. Thank you to Rotary to getting this going for us. Thank you for your fundraising, to donate the money to actually make this happen, and for all of your work through the design of this project, because I think it is going to be so nice because of the design that you have chosen and that we have endorsed. So, I move approval of the contract as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters, and a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath, to approve the contract 24117 PRK 002 with Strandberg Construction, in the amount of $377,112.77, to perform the Cap Santa of a viewpoint project. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and again, thanks to Rotary, and we look forward to working together and making a great project. Okay, next up is Item 6B. This is an interlocal agreement for Skagit County Interlocal Drug Enforcement Unit Task Force, SCIDEU. This is a discussion item with possible action, and Chief Floyd is here to present. Chief Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Good evening, members of council, members of the audience. I'm here tonight to present to you an interlocal agreement that we're hoping to renew with the Skagit County Interlocal Drug Enforcement Unit. This is our local regional task force. And as you probably recall, Chief Criminal Deputy Meyer from the sheriff's office gave you a presentation here recently about some of the unique investigative capabilities that they bring to the table to assist with addressing criminal activity all over Skagit County. The major changes to this interlocal agreement are the addition of the Oak Harbor Police Department, who has a strong desire to participate regionally and address some of the challenges that they're facing in Island County with limited resources to investigate, and some of the specialized capabilities that were highlighted by Chief Meyer. It also contains the addition of a contingent funding model, and that was in response to some instability as far as funding our regional drug task forces from a federal grant that has historically funded our task forces for well over 25 years, the Edward Byrne Memorial Grant Funding. Department of Commerce in Washington State felt that they wanted to reallocate some of those funds to different programs, and that jeopardized the stable funding that drug task forces statewide had to operate. So, in response to that, the governor's office requested some money be set aside for drug task forces, and I know that some of our local representatives in the 40th District are already working very hard to address this for a long-term, stable solution. So, we do not anticipate any further funding concerns going forward, but this highlighted the need to build a safeguard in for any future unforeseen circumstances, and that's why you'll see that funding contingency. Thankfully, our percentage of that is very low, and the funding contingency is also capped at a maximum of $100,000. So, if that full amount was needed, our contribution would only be $10,000. The rest of this interlocal agreement is barely consistent with what was pre-existing, and so this won't change operationally what we could expect the task force to be providing to us as a service, or nor will it change our participation in the task force.
All right, looks like you're ready for questions.
I am.
Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
What is Skadu's budget this year?
I would have to get that from Chief Meyer. I know that they typically -- I don't finalize their budget till the end of August, so I have not obtained the final numbers from him.
Do you know round figure?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't. I do know that, just speaking with him, prior to the interlocal agreement being sent, they had resolved a fair number of large seizure cases that also will help fund their enforcement activities fairly confidently for the next couple of years. So, we don't anticipate any need to revisit the contingency, but I cannot tell you what their total operating budget is currently.
Okay. The hypothetical that's in the agreement, you know, says that there'd be a $400,000 budget. That strikes me as sort of low, but even if the projected shortfall's $100,000, we'd have a 10%, so $10,000 if it's more than that. It is a pretty worthwhile endeavor here, so I'm supportive either way. I would kind of like to know, but it's not decisional for me. I support the agreement either way.
You'll probably also recall from Chief Meyer's presentation that we were designated as a HIDA task force earlier this year, which makes us eligible for federal funding through the high-intensity drug trafficking areas, and that is a substantial partnership that helps fund operations, not only with the cost of investigating, but also with technology that is available through the HIDA Regional Office in Seattle.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
So, I know that there's the executive board that is a composition that's identified here on page nine. Remind me which cities have -- I mean, we fund an officer out of our police budget to be on that team. Will Oak Harbor also have someone on that team that they're going to be funding? I was just -- I was kind of -- I was trying to remember how -- are there -- is the team funded by each individual municipality or city or county to be on that? And then are there also admin people that are funded out of the budget that I think Mr. Walters is getting at?
I can answer that. So, their office manager is funded out of the task force budget, as well as the unit supervisor. Skagit County had previously shouldered the cost of the supervisor for that unit, in addition to the two detectives that they contribute the salaries for. That position was a sergeant position that they had previously used for their traffic enforcement unit, and they had a desire to put that position back in their traffic unit, because the county commissioners would not grant them an additional new position. The board supported funding the supervisor position out of the task force budget, because the amount they had available was robust enough to support that. Although participating agencies paid a cost of salaries for their own detectives, so Oak Harbor would be paying the full cost of their detective, and speaking with Chief Sloick, their intention is to have an individual there full-time. And speaking with Chief Slowick, their intention is to have an individual there full time. They've already selected who that's going to be and sent them to training the last couple of months with the task force detectives. So the expectation is starting in January that an individual will be assigned there full time.
Any other questions? Motions perhaps?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I guess if no further questions or comment, I move that city council authorize the mayor to execute interlocal agreement as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McDougal and a second by Mr. Walters to approve Ms. Hubick. Oh, oh, sorry. I had Mr. Walters in my ear also. It was simultaneous, so Ms. Hubick on the second.
I'll yield to Ms. Hubick.
Motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubick and any, to approve the interlocal agreement as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Francie Agfeo, please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Mr. Fantini. Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. Next up is item 6C. This is a contract modification, social worker agreement. And Chief Floyd is still here, but probably going to be joined by some supporting cast. Chief Floyd.
Thank you. So we are here with a proposal to extend the current agreement between the City of Anacortes and the Anacortes Family Center. And I've asked Mr. Johnson, as the executive director of the family center, to join me just to give you a recap of some of the accomplishments that our cooperative efforts have accomplished in 2024 so far or since our last contract. This is, this contract is good through the end of the year and we just want to get a head start on 2025 to continue the successful partnership. So with the Anacortes Family Center, through the work of our fire department, police department and the family center, we work to build relationships and rapport with individuals that are the most difficult to reach, assess their needs, develop a level of trust that can allow us to guide them to a more successful, stable living environment. And my portion of this is to explain to you where we're at today with this partnership and what we're working on currently. In contrast to our more reactive response when the encampments on T Avenue were very visible and problematic, we've been very successful at addressing those issues. And now we're focused more on proactively addressing homeless individuals or potentially homeless individuals to get them to more stable housing before the encampments are established. Late spring, early summer of this year, Island County cleared a large encampment from the Hoffman Road area of Island County, an unincorporated area just north of the Oak Harbor city limits, in close proximity to the Navy Base. And a few of those individuals were individuals that had been previously on T Avenue that refused to accept any of the assistance that were offered to them through the family center and, and the police department's cooperative agreement efforts. Those individuals returned back to the area upon Island County clearing the Hoffman Road area and we immediately engaged those individuals, continuing to offer them the same options, trying to get them to a more successful place. And a couple of the more problematic ones have yet to accept those offers, but what we've successfully done is kept them from establishing any long term encampments. They continue to move so they're not impacting any potential neighborhoods, businesses. They're in compliance with current city parking statutes. And preventing them from establishing those encampments is also preventing the other issues that go along with those encampments, the theft, garbage, drug activity, drug dealing, other crimes. We continue to build rapport with homeless individuals that you probably are not even seeing and unaware that are even there. We do have some individuals, though not as visible as our friends on T Avenue, where are still experiencing challenges regarding stable housing. And, you know, our teams, because we know where to look for those individuals, we've, we've had some contact and our patrol staff is doing a fantastic job of forwarding that information on to the family center for follow up when we encounter these individuals on patrol calls, that we know where to find them and start building that rapport. We also continue to remove and dispose of abandoned RVs before homeless individuals can move into them and establish any type of encampments like we saw previously on T Avenue. We're just removing the opportunity for those things to occur. This is where I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson. And before I do, coming at the end of this presentation, you're going to hear from him some significant success stories that we've had in 2024. And I'd like to highlight, you know, a couple of those were individuals that you probably would not have even known about. The third one is probably one of the more problematic cases that we had at the peak of T Avenue. And the fact that they are as successful as they are now is truly why we'd like to continue this program because of the success that we have seen. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you, chief. Good morning, afternoon, evening, mayor, council members and audience. So I am here just to go over the outreach impacts, the impacts that this program has made day in and day out and what our partnership has allowed us to do in the lives of very real people in our town. So this is a report that goes out to each of you at the end of every month that tells you exactly what kind of outreach events have occurred, how many clients we're meeting with, how many distinct clients we're meeting with and what kind of graduations might have occurred, meaning clients that have left into more stable, healthier, happier, more dignified housing situations. And then we break them down kind of by less identifying factors. And so as you can see that, you know, this, this report every month shows that we are demonstrating a really big dedication in going out and pounding the pavement, working with these clients, building the rapport and the relationship so that there's a trusting relationship that's being developed so that they can take big steps when those big steps are ready and, and maybe do things that they would 10 months ago, maybe not even think would have been possible. We're really proud of those things and I think that's what this program, I think a lot of people think about this program as, you know, really quick fix. We want a Band-Aid on the issue of T Avenue. And that's not, that's not this program. That's not how this works. This is a program of really reinvestment in our neighbors to identify what's going on, what harms them and bring them back into our society. This is the other half. So the first half, we spend a lot of time on because that's the outreach effort. That's the work that's being done at least twice a week where our coordinated outreach team from the fire department, from the police department and from the Anacortes Family Center go out, knock on doors, talk to folks, go up and work with folks in tents, people in their cars, folks that call in and say, hey, there's a new, there's a new tent parked near the end of my block. Can you please talk to them? But this is the flip side of that. This is, these are the families that are ready to enter our shelter, right? And so you can see that we have just tremendous success all the way down the road with those folks. From, you know, 25 families coming in with an 89% success rate, meaning 89%, 89.3 to date have graduated into successful permanent housing with lease agreements. 99 total individuals served, a number of two parent families, 655 number of children served, 12 men, 31 women, lots of counseling referrals, lots of adult counseling referrals, lots of children counseling referrals. And then we also have a spot for making sure that clients are getting adequate medical care. And then you can see that our average vulnerability score of 14.5, that puts us as one of the most vulnerable, vulnerable programs in our region by usually a point or two at least. So we are seeing the hardest to serve on this objective scale, doing so with the least amount of time needed and having the greatest impact and long term impact compared to any other program that you could put us up against anywhere in our region. So a couple of success stories to end you off on. These are kind of cool because I think they run the gamut. So the first is a couple that you very well may know. You may have gone to school with them. There were two very resistant transient drug user couple with children that the outreach team connected with week after week after week. Same, Ashley and Nina would come into my office, what happened this week? Same report. Okay, did we get a little bit longer? Yep, they said a few more things. And then next week, did you know that this person knew that person? Oh, great. Interesting. Okay. Did you know that in fifth grade geometry, he beat Christine for a very important quiz? You know, things that really helped bring the person back into, back into the fold of what our community is and the history of our community. And so finally, when this female was pregnant, they had a dog. The dog happened to have alliterative babies as well. The family finally looked at each other and said, this isn't going to work. This hasn't been working. It's not going to work. What do we need to do different? And they finally came to us and after probably 150 touches, said, we are ready to do whatever you want, whatever you think is going to help us most. So they have been through our program. They have successfully finished the first emergency shelter, 60 to 90 day stay. They are now in our two year program, doing very well. Baby very happy. So we are really happy about that. The next two are folks that may not be people that you have had a lot of interaction with. One was a young man who had parents that kind of brought him out here for their own reasons and then left him for their own reasons. And he was in school. He was actually incredibly industrious, though he had no money. He found a job. He managed to scrounge around and find a few friends that could put some clothes on him that were appropriate for food hospitality. And he did the best he could. He didn't show up to school a lot, but he did show up to most of his work shifts. And when we finally found him, this was in the summer, which makes it the hardest time to find a student like this. We said, you know, where did you come from? What's going on? And it turns out that he and his family have lived in Anacortes for a really long time. Parents have split, every time they split, they try to get as far away from each other and then they come home and then everything seems to want to work out and then everything kind of blows up again. But he's kind of put the foot down and said, no, I am not going to continue to just follow you and yo-yo with you. I'm 17. I need to figure this out. And so he did, but he had no idea what that meant. So our team was able to work with him to figure out, okay, let's get you in a motel. Let's figure out what you need for appropriate clothing for both high school and for your job and figure out what housing looks like for you going forward. It just so happened to turn out that Skagit Valley College had their open enrollment for their summer school housing open within like two weeks. And so we said, great, enroll in summer school. You only have to take one class. Then you're eligible for getting into their schooling, their school housing and all of those problems are fixed. So he is very happily in an apartment, going to school and ready to hit the ground running. He wants to be an electrical engineer. So I think he will do all of those things plus more. And then the last is a situation that's, that's, everybody at Island Hospital knows this person. He's a gentleman that had been living in his car for a long time, but on a family's property, so not causing problems for people. But he was clearly losing his battle with, with many, many ailments, including cancer. And Island Health would take him, stabilize him, but they said, you know, I'm sorry, we can't just keep you until you die. That's not how we work. And so what we were able to do was we put him together with our motel voucher program. He found a motel that he very much loved. It was close enough for him to walk to and from store grocery where he could go get his beloved muffins and from the drive-in, the Algo Drive-In. And so we connected him to hospice. Hospice began to see him in that hotel room and within two weeks, unfortunately, he perished. But he said, right before he, he perished, that this was by far the best, to the best last three weeks of anyone's life they could ask for. And so he credited, credited Ashley and credited Steve and our team for kind of being his family during those last few days because he felt at that point, the community had turned their back on him. And we were real people, real examples of investments that we wanted to make that process happy, healthy and successful.
All right. Well, thank you for those compelling stories. And I certainly, every, every time I'm out in public, I know the, the T Avenue thing, it was a little over a year and a half ago. Public's always aware of that, but I always try to remember to thank the people who really made it happen, Nina and Ashley, the level of trust they were able to build. And I think council's certainly well aware that it's not just that highly visible aspect there, the work that they're able to do to help folks so we don't have that situation develop again. It's really important. So with that, I'll be quiet. And chief, did you have something more to add or council questions?
I wanted to add just briefly to the first success story that Mr. Johnson gave. What's not in here is, is the double digit number of pending court cases that those two individuals had combined. And by getting them to engage and be contributing productive members of our community, the amount of money that we have saved in court costs, the cost of prosecuting those cases, most of which resulted from their activity on T Avenue, what we were trying to address when we started this program. So I think that's an important point to add because it does have a financial impact.
All right. Counsel, questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I'm very in support of this for many reasons, several of the ones that you just mentioned. I appreciated Mr. Johnson talking about how, the distinction that this is not a quick fix. It's very much having a position like this, having this type of partnership. It's being available to people when they're ready to take advantage of that help. You know, I think I was, I think like many, you know, I consider myself to have a lot of compassion for, for those that are less fortunate and find themselves in these positions. But I think back to, to the T Avenue days when there was an encampment down there and, and at times folks would lose patience with the process and what was happening. And can't we just clear it? Can't we just get rid of it? And I think to the mayor and, and the staff's credit, taking the time to help the people that truly wanted to be helped, it just, that is invaluable. I mean, we look at, I look at this. I mean, we look at, I look at this as sixty thousand dollars. I mean, I wish we could have four of these positions. You know, I think that the need, the need would be there. You know, I am familiar with that first couple that was mentioned in the success story and it is pretty amazing to watch the trajectory of their lives. And I think about, you know, when you're able to help people and they truly do turn that corner and they truly do help themselves, I look forward to the value that they're going to bring to the community as a whole. I mean, who knows what their next step is going to be? I know mentioning the two-year program now and I can only imagine things getting better from there. But being able to fund this type of initiative, I think, is just so powerful. I also want to, I know we've set it up here, but I also do want to give credit to Ashley and Steve because I think a lot of times the help, people being receptive to help has a lot to do with the personality of the people that are reaching out to them and that are there to be compassionate and be available and not be judgmental because a lot of times we find these people in their greatest moment of weakness. So I'm very supportive of this and thank you, thank you Dustin Family Center for the work that, the much-needed work that's being done.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'm also supportive of the instant contract here that's in front of us, although it's only a segment, as has been alluded to, of the larger effort here in town. And these two people there on the screen are not funded by this contract, but by a separate grant and other arrangements and I think are also a critical component of how we have had the success that we've had. City Council has never had a meeting about T Avenue and I think it would be worthwhile for us to have at least some, for lack of a better term, post-mortem of that situation because I think we certainly learned as a city that while it might be convenient on some level to say, "Well, the homeless people in our community are going to all go live on T Avenue and thus not in my neighborhood or thus not elsewhere." It was a real detriment to the T Avenue neighborhood, but it was also a detriment to the people that found themselves in that homeless situation because they were in a self-reinforcing situation on T Avenue where they could seek a community and solace in that community from their troubles. I think we should be, certainly should be compassionate about the fact that, you know, they needed that, but it wasn't good for them and it wasn't good for anybody else. As Mr. Fantini alluded to as well, it led to a lack of patience among the neighborhood along T Avenue, the other users of T Avenue, so that people couldn't hear. And there were certainly a lot of people who couldn't hear what the problems were that those people were facing. So I would be very interested in knowing where every single one of those people has gone. You know, how many of them have we been able to find housing for? How many have gone elsewhere? I know that we've got some that went to the Catholic Community Services Housing in Mount Vernon, some that went to the Community Action Housing in Mount Vernon, some that were veterans that could get special assistance from the VA. I'm interested in knowing who's left and who we haven't been able to help. Sometimes I think that there is too much emphasis on the idea that, well, these people refused services because sure, that's true on some level, but it's because they're not, they're either not capable of accepting services or maybe in some rational way, the service doesn't make sense for them. I think the fact that they refuse services is not at the end of the conversation. It's more the beginning. And I think these people here on the screen know that and that's why they've been able to have the success that they've had. It may take a hundred and fifty touches in order to figure it out, but that's kind of what we got to do in order to get these people back, back into our society. So I think there are a lot of lessons there that we would benefit from articulating and keeping in the back of our mind. Allowing an encampment to occur like that doesn't help us. Doesn't help them. Certainly didn't help the neighborhood. And I think that that's a lesson for all jurisdictions. I'll be speaking on this topic on November fourth, the Northwest Planners Forum, especially in the aftermath of the grant's past decision. And the options are still not unlimited for what cities can do in this space, even post-S Supreme Court decision. But I think we need to make some smart choices here. And we've now adopted these new ordinances that kind of create this de facto policy. We're not going to allow people to hang out in neighborhoods in their cars or in their RVs and that kind of thing. And that's good. And I've referred, you know, quite a few people in the Old Town neighborhood to APD and AFC and others when people have shown up. Keeping people from becoming embedded in a neighborhood and invested in that, in their encampment in a neighborhood is real key. But maybe there are other keys. I think we would, it's really worthwhile for us to think about that and know that so that we can figure this out going forward. Because I am afraid that we have not seen the last of this problem and we're going to have to deal with it on some substantial way again.
To your point, Mr. Walters, I believe that the individuals that haven't accepted services yet, the key to those successes is our continued persistence and offering those services at a time when they reach a critical point where they've decided that they want to be a participant in changing their trajectory. And that's exactly what we saw with this first success story. There was a triggering event, which was, you know, having a child on the way and they decided that was enough that they wanted to change their trajectory. And it just happened to correlate with when we were there offering services. And when those two come together, we have an opportunity for success.
That strikes me as a key and one of the things that we maybe can't force, but in the meantime, we need to insulate everybody else from the negative effects of people that find themselves in this situation.
And sometimes that triggering event knows law enforcement.
That was the triggering event for a few of them. That's correct.
Mr. McDougall, I'm sorry. All right. Ms. Cleland McGrath, okay?
Thank you. Just a couple more things I would like to add on as someone who is on the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee and have had a number of meetings since twenty twenty, beginning of 2020. This is a really great program. You know, Ashley, Nina, Steve are amazing human beings that are out there and they have the unique personality and dynamic to really work with folks. But I do want to emphasize the fact that, from my experience being on the board of the Family Center and being on council for this, you know, it takes so many touches because there's been so many broken relationships and so many broken promises for these folks to get to the point that they are in, that it takes a long time to build trust with them. They've had services that they've been promised that haven't materialized. And I think that that is the key component, that we are very lucky in Anacortes, that we actually have services available through the Family Center, through the Housing Authority, as we saw some of those folks, I think, go there, that we have our outreach team who can talk to these folks in the street who are going through a crisis situation. But when they are finally ready to make that change and adhere to the expectations that the Family Center has, that they get a response immediately, that they can go and stay in a hotel. We've got motel voucher program for them. So they can go in that night and have a safe place to sleep because there's, we hear about a really narrow window when they're in crisis, when they are open to change. And if you don't catch them at that exact moment, they can slip back into their old habits. So I just want us to, I just want to emphasize the fact that having outreach, having social workers in the field is great, but what makes people's lives change is that when they're ready, that there's somewhere for them to go to make those changes. And so I just want to say thank you to the Family Center and there's other, you know, Housing Authority and other groups. And that's a really important thing, which is why we are able to see these success stories. And that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. McDougall.
Yeah, I was going to basically say similar things. I think Ms. Cleland McGrath highlighted really well and the chief and Mr. Johnson both said the word trust is the key. And just, you know, I really hundred percent support the program and really appreciate, you know, the partnership and the willingness to like really play the long game and just work through building that trust and working to solve individual problems and show, you know, over the course of time, like show folks that we are willing to invest in them. And sometimes that takes a lot of touches, so I really appreciate it and the partnership. So thank you. Thank you both.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. I also echo everyone's sentiments here. Very three strong, compelling stories here. No one deserves to die alone and nobody deserves to feel like they want to die, which is how some folks out there just feel. I want to extend extra thanks for catching someone in their young adulthood. Those are people that are good at avoiding conflict, avoiding conflict resolution, trying their best to get things done on their own and quite frankly, being very stubborn. And to be able to get someone into a place where, again, they can trust someone if they get to a spot where they may fall back into troubled times, they've been able to learn that if you ask the right people for help, they will help you. So it's rebuilding that trust that's been broken over and over and over and over. So, yeah, I would love to authorize the mayor to sign this contract. This contract modification, twenty-three dash one-one-three dash APD dash zero-zero-one, with the Anacortes Family Center in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, which increases the total contract price to one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Fantini to approve the contract modification as presented. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
As a serving board member of the Family Center, I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Mr. Francio, I can take the vote, please.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you and thank you again. All right, final item on tonight's agenda is six D. This is a port security grant to purchase a public safety boat for the Anacortes Fire Department. This is a discussion item with possible action. Assistant Chief Burbank, when you're ready. And make sure the microphone is on, even though you do have a very commanding voice.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make a presentation on a public safety boat. For those of you that don't know, my name's Joe Burbank. I'm one of the assistant chiefs with the Anacortes Fire Department. We're going to look at some of the maritime data that affect the Anacortes Fire Department responses. In Anacortes, we have two thousand four hundred and forty-three marina slips. We have over eight thousand boats that get launched annually out of Skyline and Cap Sandy Marina. We have over seventeen thousand nine hundred guest boaters that come in and spend the night in one of our marinas throughout the course of the year. In addition to all those boats that come in, we're responsible for the waterways and we get dispatched to boat fires, both in the marina, in the waterways. We get dispatched to kayakers and paddleboarders in distress. We get dispatched to boats that have lost power, that get pushed into the rocks, onto the shore, and need assistance. There's also fourteen different islands around Fidalgo Island that when people are having a medical emergency and call nine-one-one, they dispatch the Anacortes Fire Department to. Our current situation is we have a seventeen-foot rubber Zodiac for a response that is pretty much inadequate at doing any type of fire protection when a vessel's on fire. We go to islands for medical calls, but we are unable to transport the patient on this vessel. So it is really inadequate for what the needs of the Anacortes Fire Department are. This has been about a year and a making of coming from concept to getting to the point where I'm able to stand before you make this presentation. We definitely realize the need for upgrading from our current situation and a grant was our first avenue that we decided to approach in doing that. I was able to contact Munson Boats here in Burlington to get a quote because I had no idea what a vessel that we were looking at was going to cost. Kind of told them what our needs were going to be and they gave us a quote of six hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and three dollars. We wrote a port security grant for seven hundred thousand, just to give a little bit of room there. The way the port security grant functions is you write the grant for the amount that you need for your purchase. If awarded, they'll award seventy-five percent of it and the agency applying has to come up with the other twenty-five percent. So we wrote the grant for seven hundred thousand and we were awarded five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the city is responsible for funding twenty-five percent of that. We do have casino impact fee money that we received in 2024 for the tone of eighty-five thousand that we would like to contribute that towards the city's twenty-five percent and we anticipate getting that every year and using that to fund the city's twenty-five percent. There will be ongoing maintenance costs with this. I contacted one of the boat maintenance facilities here in town. They service a few boats that are very similar to this, the one that we're looking at. And they said it's going to be about three thousand dollars a year for annual maintenance on it. About every five years, we're going to have to pull it out of the water and redo the bottom paint and that's probably going to be an additional five thousand. Talking to the boat builder, asking him what the longevity of this vessel was going to be, he said the vessel itself will probably last you forty or fifty years. The engines on it are probably going to need replaced at about the fifteen-year mark and probably the electronics as well. So in addition to purchasing this boat, we are planning on setting aside money for fifteen years down the road to replace the engine and electronics. And at today's price, that would be at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The spec we're looking at is going to be a boat that's roughly thirty-six feet long, twelve feet wide. It's going to have an enclosed cabin that we can put a gurney on. We're going to have a heater inside that so when we have hypothermic patients, we can keep them nice and warm, as opposed to the current vessel we have now that when you pull someone out of that water and they're in the open air and you're trying to drive back at thirty miles an hour, that is not a good situation. Most of those islands that we get dispatched to for medical calls do not have docks, so we need to get a beach landing craft that we're able to pull that vessel right onto the beach, lower the ramp to be able to access that beach. We're looking at twin four-fifty Yamahas to power it. It's got a load capacity of seventy-five hundred pounds and when you are at that capacity, you need a lot of horsepower to do, push that vessel. And Munson has built many fireboats that ship throughout the entire United States and they said the number one thing that they get when they don't go with a large enough engine, because people want to scale it back, is once they get it loaded to capacity, it doesn't have the horsepower to get them around. So that's why we went with that size. It's going to have a fifteen-hundred GPM pump on it for fire suppression. As I mentioned, Munson has built many fireboats and shipped throughout the country. This is one that they built for Cherry Point Refinery up in Watcom County. It is almost identical to the spec that we're looking at and we have a field trip planned to go take a look at their boat, be able to ask them questions on the design of it, to be able to make any modifications that we need to. Also, I mentioned it's, the boat we're specking is a landing craft so we can put the ramp down, go right onto the beach. That's also very enabling when you're trying to rescue a kayaker or someone in distress out of the water, being able to lower that down so they're right at the, you're rescuing them right at the water level instead of trying to pull them over the gunnel. water level instead of trying to pull them over the gunnel. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Chief. I know there'll be a number of questions and maybe, maybe if Chief Harris wants to kind of explain some of the timeline about the money as far as accepting the grant and what it means that, you know, that's not, not asking council to decide on purchase of a boat right now, I guess.
Yeah, sure. So the, the grant, it was awarded on September 13th, and we have 30 days. So October 13th is, is when we have to notify them whether we're going to accept or decline the award. That doesn't bind us to a contract. There will still be a bid process, more research to go into the actual boat that we would choose to be. At that point, there'd be another contract in front of council to approve or deny.
And then timeframe for
Yeah, so it's a
for the capital facilities plan.
Yeah, so it would be, so if we were to order the boat today, they're looking at a 24-month build time. So it more likely than not, we're talking about the 2027 budget. And just to kind of add to Chief Burbank's, with the match. So like we, we've requested that we set aside the $85,000 casino impact fee from 2024. We'd like to do the same in 2025, which would pretty much complete the city's match. At the same time, I've started initial conversations with Skagit County EMS to, to also help us offset that cost. So I don't anticipate the city paying the entire 175, but I'm preparing for that, worst case. So a lot of the reason we need this particular boat is for Skagit County EMS and our contract with them, and they seem willing to at least entertain the, the talks.
Thank you. All right, council. I know you probably could answer all those, Chief Burbank, but I'd like to, I'd like to put Chief Harris on the spot. It's my job.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you very much for laying all those numbers out. I wish we had a little spreadsheet here in front of me so I could do all the math in my head. So I just wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things. So the $85,000 a year is going to be, it sounds like for two years, and that'll satisfy the city's match. But, but after that, two years, we won't be looking at an additional $85,000 every year for like maintenance or any, we will be
No. We'll get the impact fee, the city will still get the impact fee from the casino.
Okay. And then as far as, will this require any additional firefighters, or are we looking at training the folks that we already have on the, the boat?
It will not require additional firefighters. We currently have about 35 to 40% of our department trained to operate our 17-foot Zodiac, and the intent is to train those, a third of the department essentially, to be operators of this vessel.
Okay. And then as far as the, the additional maintenance and all that, you said the boat would last about 40 to 50 years?
Yes, the whole itself is, it's made of aluminum. It's, as long as you care for it and maintain it and keep the bottom paint up, it's going to last quite a few years.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking all that because I just, I, I definitely think it's, it's when I look at the Marine 29 that we have now, and then I've read some of the chief's reports that have come out about some of the things that have been done with the Marine 29, like the sailboat issue that you had in August of this year and whatnot. It's amazing that we can do the things we do on that little boat. But it also surprises me that as an island community, we don't have a better, a better boat.
Coming from Landlocked Eastern Washington, when I got here, I was very shocked we don't have one either.
Yeah. I also thank you for answering the question about, it sounds like you're also going to look to Skagit County, possible, possibly Island County to offset some of what, what I would assume would be the ongoing maintenance costs, or?
So the current conversation with Skagit County have been to, to take care of the initial purchase price. We, we briefly sat down with Director Polonio. He's willing to, he thinks it's a reasonable request. We did not request ongoing maintenance costs. That hasn't come up this far in discussion, but it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I have a number of questions and concerns, some of which I think can be reasonably anticipated by anyone who has sat in some of these meetings. They have to do with the capital facilities plan. Really rather not go over that yet again. But we are supposed to articulate our capital needs in our 20-year plan and then in our six-year plan, and maybe in a lack of anticipation about getting this grant, we wouldn't have put it in our six-year plan. But we, if, if we have a need like this, we should be putting these needs, even if they're not funded, into our 20-year plan, into our needs analysis, so that we are aware of the fact that we have this need. So let's, so let's back up. And, and that, that assumes that we can demonstrate this need, because I, I didn't actually see that demonstration in this presentation. But if we have a need for a boat like this, I think city council is entitled to be aware of that need so that we can then make choices about whether or not we want to fund it, or we want to figure out some other way of funding it than spending our own dollars, in order to fulfill the need. But I mean, this, this comes up over and over again across departments. I'm not pointing fingers at the fire department. We, we need to know about all of the unmet needs like this. Not nice to have things, but things that we, we actually have a, a serious and significant need for. I appreciate the alternative of spending the $85,000 annual casino impact money, but that money can assumedly be spent on anything that we determine is appropriate for that use. So because money is fungible, that, that is something else that we are not buying that apparently, that assumedly is on our needs list. If you can convince Skagit County to fund this through the EMS program, that is much more attractive to me than spending $85,000. And what, while it, it may be casino impact revenue, is also money that could be spent on anything else. And so starts to approach what could be considered general Samish, the Samish Indian Nation has landing craft similar to what you're describing. They keep it parked over here, aluminum hull. They don't leave it in the water because it is something that they, they want to try to preserve, and leaving it in the water is going to have more of a negative effect. But you might talk to Samish about that. They've got, they've got two boats, and I actually think, I think Munson built at least one of the two, maybe both. Can you tell us, you, you had some stats here in the presentation. The presentation isn't in our packet, so I don't, I can't go back to refer to it here. But you had some stats about how many boats are launched from the marinas or those kinds of things. Do you have also stats on how many events that currently occur that we would use the boat for to respond with?
We currently use it for race week, when the sailboat races are going on, so it's out on the water that entire week. But aside from that.
Yeah, so there's, there's been, there's some, there's scheduled events like that. There's used sailing, if that's what you mean. But the other, so since the small boat went into service in June of '22, it's responded to 33 incidents already, and that's the ones it was able to respond to. There's also a number of incidents it wasn't able to due to, it's not a nighttime capable boat. It's not a weather, a poor weather boat. So there's probably another, probably 10 to 15 that it never responded to. And when we discussed it, we had
10 to 15 that you, what, what's your threshold? 10 to 15 there that you couldn't respond to with a smaller boat?
Correct. And that's a number that we, so that unfortunately, there's no way to track that data. That's a little bit subjective as to, we talked about, we, we anticipated that question, you know, as far as, we just can't, we can't pull that data out. But there were 33 times that it went out on calls since, since June of '22. And I will say that when we talk about the demonstrated need, I mean, the 33 calls or the others that prompted then, when we put the boat into service, it's because there were calls that we couldn't go to, so it's an unmet need there. But also, we look at just the potential that exists, the amount of boat slips, the amount, a marina fire would be devastating for a potential loss of life, loss of dollars. And so part of our job is to not only look at the data that's occurred, but to look at the potential that exists in town. And right now, there's no way for us to access the backside of a dock. We can get to one side, but we can't get there at all. Like I said, you mentioned the Samish boats. There's other boats available to us, and they say they keep them out of the water, things like that, but not in a timely fashion. We cross staff with our station one. We can have a boat underway five to 10 minutes regardless of where our staffing's at. Any mutual aid boat, we're looking at 45 to 60 minutes before it ever leaves the marina. So that's another concern about not having a city boat.
And to be clear, I'm not suggesting that you go ask them for their boats. I'm only suggesting
I'm pretty sure they'd say no.
They have similar boats, and maybe you could ask them about something, learn something from that. So we're talking maybe 45, 48 events since 2022? When, when did we get the boat in 2022?
Yeah, it went into service in June of '22.
June of 2022. And do we have a plan for mortgage?
We do. So currently, of course, our Marine 29 is currently at the, the port. The intent is to continue to, to moor at the port. We just entered discussions that look very promising with the port for reduced fees moving forward as well.
It seems to me that it provides a significant service, especially to the Cap Santa Marina, to the port. I'm hopeful that we could get a deal on mortgage, mortgage thing.
So, yeah, and I, I believe they're in agreement with that. They've been discussing it internally. We'll be meeting shortly. Hope for some better news there.
Okay. We don't have the grant agreement in our packet either. What are the conditions of the grant? So typically, that would be a contract, and it would say, you're going to maintain this boat in service for X number of years, maybe some other conditions. Can you describe those?
So it really, it's funny, it doesn't really discuss that. And I'll go back through and read, because you're right, we don't have, it's kind of a funny process. Of course, we applied for the grant. Then before we can have a lot of information, we accept the grant, and then the formal agreements come, you know, for signing and things like that.
So in the future, we'll see a grant contract?
Yes, absolutely. And with that too, though, the, the only thing that I recall from the grant process was that we have 36 months to spend the money from the time that they do it, so to acquire the boat.
Thank you.
Ms., I'll just go right down the line if, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Sure, thank you. So it was nice to see the current boat, because I didn't have that in my head. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's a glorified dinghy. Might call it a tender if you have a yacht. But I guess that, I have concern about, and I, I don't have concern that there isn't a need for it. I do, I, I can understand the need for it, and I think it'd be good, it, it makes sense to have it in the capital facilities plan. But I guess I, I'm, my need right now is to have a better understanding of our ongoing costs. So what is insurance going to look like? What is mortgage going to look like? It's no longer a tender. It's a real boat with a landing craft. So, so do we have to have a captain's license?
You know, so with that, so because we don't take on commercial passengers, it's less than 72 feet, non-paying passengers, that's, that's where the captain's license comes in.
So, so I guess when we have a ambulance, we are refunded. So this type of, where we rescue, there isn't any kind of, we're not, we can't bill an insurance company. There's, like, is there any kind of recouping the costs for saving people's lives, or?
So to the best of my knowledge, no, with the exception of when it returns to shore, it'll be transferring to our ambulance, in which case we would be billing from that point.
Okay. And then there's got to be more training involved. I mean, you guys are going to be in open water, transferring patients. So maybe not a captain's license, but there's got to be, what are those standards?
There would be, all right, so it's, it's really, we set the standards as the AHJ. It does, it's not as much, it's honestly a little bit surprising. You know, I agree with you. That being said, I mean, and part of the reason when we put the small boat in service in, in 2022 was with the anticipation of having a more robust, more, more robust program in the future. So this, it is the same training, it's the same water skills. It's now there's a new boat with different technology. It's a little bit bigger. Also, on some levels, it should be a little bit easier because it'll have, you know, thrust assist and things like that for the docking and getting around. But certainly larger, you know, having two motors is critical. I've been in the thing a number of times out in the middle of the channel. Having one makes me nervous. I'm not a big boat guy. But, so there's, there's a lot of reasons for it, and certainly more training, but not necessarily more training hours, not, not necessarily more training costs. It's just going to be a little different skill set with a larger boat.
And then, I mean, is there a liability to respond to incidents if we've got this boat available and a service that we're providing? What's our interaction with the Coast Guard? Is there, you know, we hear the Coast Guards go out and say if anyone's nearby, you know, there's a rescue needing to happen, this location. I guess I just, it seems like the Wild West in the way, but of how you're, you know, we can kind of just go do this. And I think that when we had the small tender that was donated to us, it was kind of like, hey, we, you guys want to go help people, let's figure out how to help people. But this seems like a much more formalized program. And what does that look like?
I think the answer is there's no legal obligation outside of our own jurisdiction, other than the contracts we have with the county. Even with that, outside of Gwemas Island, there, there is no legal requirement to say get to Allen Island with a boat. That being said, the way I view it is when a citizen calls, they have an expectation of service, and we do our best to, you know, to get there. And currently, we, we beg or borrow, you know, sometime we rendezvous with, we used Arrow to get out to barges and things like that. We find a way to get it done today, but again, there's significant delays. We had a, I think I put it in a report last month, we had a CPR on a boat that took us near an hour to get to. That's unfortunate, you know, for everybody involved. But, but again, no, no particular legal, we have liability in everything we do. I can't, everything we do, we're going to incur liability, but we incur no additional obligation.
Mr. McDougall. Ms. Hubick.
Christine took my question about the insurance. I also appreciate the public comment about the cost of a boat. Boat just means bring in another thousand. But I also know two people personally that had to rescue a paddleboarder who thought it would be fun to try to paddleboard from our shore to Gwemas Island with no vest, no personal flotation device, and tennis shoes, and glasses, and someone who wasn't able to swim well to begin with. So as we become an island community that continues to rely on tourism, and we want to be a safe place for our kids to go out on the water, it, I think, is reassuring to know that we don't always have to rely on passersby on the water to try to rescue people. You hear stories of both the Gwemas Ferry and the Washington State Ferries rescuing kayakers who have tipped over, or people who have gotten injured on the kayaks. So I would sleep better at night knowing that we have capable boats and capable trained people to do rescues if you can just get out to them in time. I do understand that, you know, if you're driving past somebody and you see someone calling for help, you want to try to rescue them and know that there's an ambulance or a boat on the way while you're a normal person trying to be a hero to save somebody. I, I, I am concerned about ongoing maintenance costs, but I do think it's a good investment and also do encourage it to be added to the capital facilities plan so that we can continue to plan for said maintenance.
And for what it's worth, you will see this project, it's, it's in the plan that's out right now. I don't think it's made it to council yet, but it's in the, the most current update that you'll see in the next 30 days. It is in there.
You're talking the capital facilities plan?
Yeah.
So I know you convinced me that accepting this grant is not obligating us to purchase the boat, but can you help me, can you help convince council of that?
I mean, that's, that's kind of the key tonight, is I, I see a lot of questions, all great questions. There is ongoing cost. I think we have a pretty good handle on the maintenance. I don't think it's going to be significant. There is, you know, 15 or 20 years from now, there is a, if we choose to, there's a, a replacement cost to it. Insurance, I actually don't know that, that's not one I thought to do. But before, if we accept the grant tonight, I'm hoping, after that, then we'll go to, you know, formal bid process, things like that, where we see real numbers. We see in real time, then we can identify what that insurance cost is. We'll have a better idea what the port's willing to, to offer, long before you see a formal contract come before you. So there's still lots of opportunity to make adjustments and things like that.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you. I was still kind of formulating how to word my question. Basically, for ongoing maintenance and operational costs, I think you alluded to or said that the conversation with Skagit County has not happened as far as like, could there be an interlocal with them, or could it be part of the EMS sort of countywide where some amount of funding could cover some maintenance operational costs? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's certainly a reasonable request. Like I said, I only approached them. I wanted to be able to tell you tonight what we were trying to accomplish for the match, because I figured that would be the big ask of the city. We haven't discussed that further outside.
Okay, that's fine. And then, of course, the, the 14 islands, like, a lot of that is in Island County. So presumably, a future interlocal could take place with Island County as well?
Yep, certainly. Yeah. And I don't, although the 14 that we're talking about, I don't know if, I was in, under the impression that was primarily Skagit County, right here, right around Fidalgo, but you're probably right.
I'm honestly not sure.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Mayor Miller.
Yes, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
And I think we have to be careful about how far out we want this. And I think we have to be careful about how far out we want this fire, this rescue boat to go, because we're taking, this is, these are people that would otherwise be on the ladder truck or an engine responding to things on land, right? Because this is not a fully staffed, so, I mean, this is-
No, and as we get outside, so we're talking about the immediate area, things that we're dispatched to today are those, they're, so they're going to be Skagit County Islands, DNR Islands right in the immediate, immediate area, yeah. And we're not, we, you agree, that we're not, there's other islands, like, Island County has, out in Friday Harbor, they have their own assets, or San Juan, excuse me, but, and there's a law in Island County, once you hit North Woodby, they have, they have their own assets down there as well, yeah.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
I guess, I mean, I, I think this is a good discussion to have, and I'm really appreciative of the fact that you were able to get this seventy-five percent covered grant. But I, I guess I'm kind of at a place where I need a better understanding of what, how we will use this boat, what types of responses we will do, what will be our geographical boundaries, kind of understanding how this flows with all of our existing responsibilities, and, and policy measures for training, staffing, liability, all of those things, because driving a, driving a, you know, a dinghy that's rubber sides and accidentally hitting a dock is not a big deal, but a thirty-six-foot metal aluminum boat can do a lot of damage if you don't have enough folks who are highly trained to dock that boat and maneuver that boat through a marina on land. I mean, things just go wrong, right? Saltwater ruins everything, and so I, I, like, it makes me, I just, I feel like I want to see, and I'm not saying that it has to be completed before we, but, you know, accept a grant, but I just, I feel like our scope is, we haven't really defined what our problem is, and what, what we really want to address with it, and how it's going to impact the department and, and the city's budget.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I want to echo Councilmember McGrath's concerns, especially about maybe expanding into a different service than we currently provide. You know, I, I think if we were talking about a fireboat operating in Cap Santa Marina, and maybe the other marinas as well on Fidalgo Island, that's one thing. If we're talking about sending this boat to Allen Island, you know, the backside of Gwemas, what, Susha? I mean, Susha is not within our jurisdiction, but would we go to Susha?
I don't know what the islands that well, I'm sorry for-
No, that wouldn't be one that we are the closest EMS agency to, but, I mean, we currently do respond on our rubber dinghy to Sinclair Island, to Vindovie Island for aid calls, and then we don't have the capabilities of actually transporting them. We have to go assess them and then call for an additional resource from another jurisdiction to come and do that.
Okay, so then you're saying it really wouldn't be an expansion of the service that we currently offer?
I would say no. In fact, even with the fire sound, just a few months ago, we took the rubber dinghy out to a boat underway with fire extinguishers to put it out. I mean, we're, we're already being called to these things, and our folks are doing everything they can. We're asking them to do it with resources that really aren't capable of doing it. So they're still, we're still doing it.
That, that's, that's reassuring. Let me ask you this, is it useful for you in your discussions with the port and with county EMS to say, well, the city council is a little hesitant about this, we really would like to have a plan for mortgage, and a plan for how we're going to provide the match before we accept the grant, or before we sign the contract, you know, at one of these stages along the way?
Yeah, no, I think that's fair, and that's, that's with the county EMS, we've already sort of had that conversation. That is not the way I presented it to the port. But yes, I mean, absolutely, so. But again, I would just, I would just like to reiterate that we have until October thirteenth to accept the grant, and then after that, we have as much time as we need, within reason, to come for the contract and alleviate some of those financial concerns before you would choose to sign that contract.
And also, re-give the money back from the grant, right? If, I understood there was a penalty-
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, it's really, it's, until we purchase the boat, we don't get the money. It doesn't, we don't, they don't give us a check, and then we go get the boat, yeah.
Yeah, familiar with those FEMA grants, unfortunately.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Question. So in regards to this grant, I'm, I'm, I'm taken back to the roundabout money that we received, and then going to a conference where we saw, or where I saw the TIP people, and they were not pleased about the fact that we hadn't utilized the grant money, and it, it almost felt like maybe we would be penalized if we didn't use the grant money. So my question to you is, if we vote to accept the grant money tonight, and then, and I also agree that we have a lot more questions to, to be answered before we approve a contract for this boat. But if we accept the grant money tonight, and, because we're under that ten-day-ish deadline, and then it's decided that we look at the maintenance costs, we look at the insurance costs, we look at the, the mortgage, we don't get the answer that we want from, from Skagit County, and we decide to give that money back, is that, are we penalized? And, and what I mean by that is, is our reputation penalized? Is it something where if we need to request grant money in the future, that that will look bad for us? How does it?
Yeah, I think there's, so, again, there's no money to give back. We, we'd simply be saying that we're going to move forward, and then if we buy the boat, then they reimburse it. So there's no exchange of funds unless we buy the boat. That being said, there's subjectivity when there's grant reviewers, and, yeah, I would have to assume that if they gave us a grant, we took it and then chose not to do it at a later date, probably doesn't help our reputation. I don't know, I mean, we're talking the federal government, so I doubt there's a lot of people that are going to remember Anacortes, but that being said, that would not be my, my preference. All that being said, I'm confident that the questions you're asking tonight are good. I feel like we covered some of the stuff, and, and I, maybe with the committee level, and then also with another presentation to council, I think, pretty certain that I can convince you with some of the data and some of the reasons why, why this is important. It really is, again, it's a, again, coming from, I've been here three years, my first question as I was touring the island when I was applying for the job was, where's your fireboat? And the assistant chief at the time was kind of chuckled, like, we don't have one. When Chief Burbank got here, he's like, where's your fireboat? You know, so it doesn't, it really doesn't make sense to me, of all the communities that I'm aware of, nobody has this kind of slip space. When we read the journals and look at, I mean, there's been significant fires in La Conner, there's been significant fires in Bellingham, Seattle. I won't say it's going to happen here, but we know that it can, so it's difficult for me as the fire chief to say we have a fire extinguisher on a rubber raft, and we're going to do the very best that we can. So I'm going to be telling you that it is critical, and, and you haven't heard that from me a lot. We do our business, and I rarely stand up here and tell you that we have to do this, or bad things are going to happen. This is as close as I'm going to get on that, and we absolutely have the risk. We've been incredibly lucky, and we hope that continues, but we make no promises.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I, I think I am much more comfortable with this purchase, and it is a purchase, it's not simply a grant, than I was at the beginning of the presentation. I, I do, I am not persuaded by the casino impact money, because that can be spent on other things. I would be very persuaded if we could get the match funded by the county, by the county EMS, and even if we can't do that, then, okay, then we just need to look at what we are willing to spend, and, and what the costs are, and consider that as money that could be spent on other things, you know, more or less akin to, to general revenue. I would also be very, much more persuaded if we could get mortgage covered by the port. And I'm kind of implying not discounted, but covered by the port. So, really looking forward to answers on those items. I'd also like to encourage fire chief, but also all the other staff, if there's a critical need, we want to hear about it before you have a solution for filling the need. Because if it's a critical need, if, and there was no grant, then we should be looking at how we can fill that need. And that's been a refrain of mine, but I, we, we want to know about the needs that you don't have solutions for, as well as the ones that you do.
You know, and I, I completely agree with that. I guess it's been a little bit of a learning process for us as we started this comprehensive plan study, is to really think how that affects the CFP, how that affects the twenty-year plan. I believe you're going to see, at least from fire, a much different approach in the CFPs and the twenty-year plan after we go through this process. But, yeah, certainly an oversight that it wasn't there before.
All right, I'll ask the question, does anybody on council want to authorize me to accept this grant for purchase of a-
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Do we think that, so our next, our next meeting would be the seventh of October, is that correct? Which would be before the thirteenth? Do we think that we'll have answers to some of the questions, like if the port will take care of the mortgage, or around that, by that time, or is that?
I wouldn't commit, I would say I can answer your insurance question between now and the seventh, but as far as the port, no, I would not expect for us, for certain answer between now and then.
Any other questions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I don't feel a hundred percent confident on voting yes on this at this point, but I also don't want to miss the opportunity. I mean, we have a great opportunity here, assuming that all the ducks fall in a row here. So, did you, did you want to offer to bring this back to us prior to the deadline with more information, whatever you can get?
I mean, I'm happy to come back on the seventh, I think the insurance question can be answered. I doubt, I doubt there's going to be a lot more. I mean, I can detail, I can list out the responses as we've gone on, I can, you know, but I, I don't think there's a ton more information that I'm going to give you on the seventh, but happy to give you what I can.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
So we do have, Public Safety Committee does have a meeting on Tuesday the first. I, I mean, I got to be honest, I, I want to vote to move forward with this grant, but I am not comfortable if the voting happens today to move forward. I think that having the next two weeks to get these questions answered are, is incredibly important before we vote on it. I think having a deadline kind of motivates getting things done. I know that there was someone I, like, I've connected you guys with in Seattle who works on the fire department out of Seattle, and hopefully you guys can connect with him and talk about it, because he does maintenance for the Alaskan Way Fire Station. I just, I need, I need some of more things answered. Not because, not because I'm worried that this isn't the right thing to do, and you haven't done your research, but it seems like when grants come before council and we accept them, then all of a sudden, we put the cart before the horse, and actually, it's not what we should be doing. And so I think I would rather take it to the wire and have our next meeting in October, and, and have some of these details hammered out before having to make, having to formalize support for it.
Okay, my only, I guess I would only say to that is beyond the insurance cost, which I can get, that's a, that's a no-brainer. We already have a pretty good handle on the maintenance costs. It's going to be about twenty-five-hundred dollars on a normal year. It's going to be obviously, and then an additional twenty-five-hundred for a total of about five thousand at that five-year mark. And then, of course, if things break and things like, I can't necessarily anticipate that, I can't tell you what that's going to be. So the details you're asking to be answered, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more what you mean by that, because there's nothing, I don't know what I'm going to be able to tell you on the seventh, that we can't tell you.
But I, but I think maybe to Ms. Cleveland McGrath's point at the committee level, maybe some of those will get a little more flushed out.
Yeah.
So there's an opportunity for the committee to, to kind of figure out which of those questions you're really going to be able to answer, and then when they come back, we'll have a little more comfort level they can share with the rest of the council.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what our fuel costs are going to be, right? I mean, I would assume that would be a, a major number or significant. I don't know. We, I, we have a boat, and it's, you sit, you go in, and you think it's going to be five or ten thousand dollars a year for like annual maintenance, and it's always at least double that. So I, I guess I just have a really hard time thinking that, I don't know, the radar is not going to go out, or some, something's going to go wrong, and so I guess I would like to have more of a cushion, and hopefully that cushion will, could be better articulated if you are able to talk to the Cherry Point Refinery who has a similar boat. Now, they're not necessarily doing as many rescues, because those are, I think those are more just routine, if anything goes wrong, they'll, they'll pull those boats out, but I, I just, I'm not, I'm not there yet. I, I, I think the impact to our budget, our overall budget is something that I, I want to be sensitive of, and we just did the levee lid lift, we just got all these firefighters and police officers funded, and I, and I was, I'm very supportive of that, but to me, this right now, like, we got to have a better scope of, of what that impact's going to be.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougall?
I tend to agree, like, I really do want to support it as well, but maybe in two weeks, could we, could we just see, like, the, the plan more fleshed out in, and documented, like, you know, tables showing the projected, like, line items and costs, you know, a map showing the coverage area, just stuff like that, where we have just more, like, yeah, I guess, like, documentation of what, even if it's in draft form, what the draft plan is.
Okay, no problem, we'll provide it.
All right.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, Mr. Fantini?
One more thing. So I, I, I do very much want to support this. I, I think, when I think about, when I look at that boat, and I think about some of the reports again that I've, that you provided on, on what our firefighters have been doing in that boat, I mean, I do feel like they are on some level going to keep doing this, it's just, are we going to give them the, the tool, the best tool for them, them to use? Because I don't, I don't anticipate that if we say no on this, that our firefighters are just going to go, well, I guess we're just going to not, you know, they're, they're going to keep doing this. And so for me personally, I think this is the first time, and again, I apologize for missing the last committee meeting, but this is the first time that I've, I've seen this, and I need a little, a little more time to process, and I, and I do think just a little bit more, even to see the maintenance costs laid out on a sheet would help. I do very much want to support this. I think it's something that, that we do need. You know, again, anything that we can do, we're, we're making these rescues already, so it's, I do want to support this, but I think just a little bit more time to digest, and since we do have that little bit of time, I, I understand that you're not going to be able to come back with answers to, to every single question, but I think even just a little bit more time to digest will help me feel really good about, about supporting this.
No problem.
All right, that's why we have possible action on the agenda. So I think it's pretty clear from council, and we can bring it, we'll bring it back, October thirteenth deadline. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, so no other business before the council, I will adjourn tonight's meeting.